Guys out in the hallway, we can take these things right here. Guys?
Guys?
Let's just put it over there so we can have an eye on the fire. Just to be legally compliant. Can you move that chair in front of you so? Much appreciated. Lane is clear and we are all set. Watch your feet.
Okay, the time is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call this town of Plainfield special order selection meeting order for September 15th. We'll call.
All right, Kay.
Kevin Cunningham.
Kay Bory.
Item C, new business number one, discuss and act on forensic audit operation review of police department payroll, procurement practices and procedures, and asset forfeiture, financial account. Any comments, questions?
I've got a number of them. First off, the notice of this meeting to me was done on Friday night at 8:30 and it was long on Thursday morning at 8:20. Having the town hall be closed until Monday morning, it was a little, or any other place would be, it was a little hard to repack it, which I got Saturday, and then be able to ask my own questions. All right, for the record, I am not against auditing any department in this town, okay? What I am against is following the proper paper procedure, proper procedures and protocols. I informed an independent audit of all town departments. They all should, everything's audited every year, okay, including the police department. Town's audited, the police department's audited every year. This audit has been done, okay? All the town departments, the paperwork have been supplied, that I have been supplied, goes back to 2022. The questions that I asked you about last time, that, what were the individual questions? There are only three that I've been supplying with from the year of 2022, okay? Now, you got more?
No.
Oh, okay, just checking on it because you usually hand these stuff five minutes before.
Nope.
Making sure. Now, now it's being requested that this law to go back to 2017, okay? Last time, the last meeting was 2020. Now we're going back to 2017. Seems like we didn't have enough here, so now we want to go fishing expedition even further back. We did have a no confidence vote in our, in our first selectmen and our, our, Kelly, okay? I have, I have a real problem with fishing expeditions, okay? Also, I'd like to say at the beginning of this meeting, just to make you aware, I'm sure you're watching, but just in case you weren't, the police commission has informed the police department in a proclamation for the police department to not hand over any documents without first going through the commission, and they are requesting legal counsel to make sure the process is transparent and legally done. So there are no more allegations. We need to make sure this is properly done, and this, this whole thing has been poorly done. I went through some other meeting minutes and I have not found very much where anything has been brought to the police commission to make sure that they're aware of any problems that will win the police department, okay? At last meeting, that was clearly stated by everybody. We have a police commission for a reason. Our police commission is here to make sure the police are doing what they need to do. If there are any concerns from any person in this town, they should bring it to the attention of the police commission. Police commission would then investigate and make sure we're doing things properly at the, at the police department. That's how this should have been handled. It shouldn't be going here, jumping over hurdles and, and causing this kind of, this kind of trouble.
Can I make a point of order? We've exceeded the amount of capacity in this room as a safety hazard and a fire marshal matter?
Are there any people who are in attendance who should step out? What's, what's the number, Jim?
We're at 31, 32. You gotta have, you can't have over 30.
We'll leave. I'll set now.
Anything else, Peggy?
Nope, that is it. That, oh, also, so just for the matters that you, you sent me paperwork on, okay? Police department forfeit, asset report?
Oh.
Yeah. Police department asset forfeiture account, you can hand that down at work, okay? The accusations that you gave me a packet on, this is vote for both of yous, okay? In less than a day, because that's all I had to ask my own questions, in less than a day, the act, the comments that were made on why we need a forensic audit, in less than a day, I found most of the answers. Okay, it's all public record. Y'all can look, and if you can't, but I can give you the three, the three things I'm aware of that he produced, that we produced tonight, that, to make sure that these allegations are not valid. In, in less than a day, I got my answers to two out of the three. Wasn't that hard. If, if we had done it right, we would have done this before it got to this point, before we had the whole town in an uproar and making allegations. All I got.
Well, she just handed me one information.
And it's like, and, and like I said, I only had less, I only had today to go for it, to find this out, okay? This, the documents for this meeting were done on Thursday morning at 8:20, okay? I found out at 8:30 on Friday night. And it took me less than, I had, I had as much as I could get by three o'clock. The answers to some of these allegations. And there's only three of them over here, by the way. We're going to do a forensic audit, $35,000. We're going to do legal counsel from the police department, we're going to have legal counsel for the town, okay? The three tiny, tiny questions that I got the information of. It's going to cost us well, well over $70, $100,000 because we're research. Okay, I'm, I'm not against audits of any kind. I just believe that since the whole town is already audited every year, including the police department, and there were any questions, they should, we should have gone to the police commission. And if we're going to audit one department because someone have, there's paperwork missing, which I got the paperwork on. If there's paperwork missing, then we should have asked the police commission to investigate and find out where this stuff is. Everything can get misfiled, but none of us are perfect. None of us don't misfile or miss something in the wrong folder in our computer or whatever. None of it. All you gotta do is ask, they will, here, here's, here's what you're missing. Because, which means, including the finance department, we all are human. None of us are perfect to do, do our jobs perfectly. I'm done, thank you.
Okay, so I did research. And forensic audits are more common now with business, they just are to check books, to check finances, okay? So I went on Google, AI overview, that was the first one that came up, so I'm using it. This is the meaning of it. A forensic audit is a detailed examination of financial records to uncover and analyze evidence of fraud, misconduct, or other irregularities. Often, not always, often for potential legal action or internal investigations. Unlike a standard financial audit, a forensic audit is typically targeted using specialized investigative techniques to follow money trails and produces findings that can be used in court proceedings or to support insurance claims. Common reasons for a forensic audit include suspected embezzlement, of course, financial statement fraud, conflicts of interest, and asset, asset misappropriation. So that's the definition I came up with, okay? Just, I want to be clear on that, it's not just for criminal reasons.
Embezzlement is criminal, embezzlement is criminal.
Other irregularities, it's not criminal, okay?
You just mentioned the word embezzlement and that is.
That is one of them, yes.
I'm just saying.
And it's often for this reason, criminal reasons, but not always, okay? And I don't, I'm, listen, I'm not part, I'm, I'm not board of finance, I mean board of, not board. I'm not the finance department, I'm not the police department, I don't see these things, okay? So as a resident, which I represent the residents of the town, I can see why they might want to see, that each side is right. So this is where we're coming to now, with, in light of everything that's happened, in light of having a vote of no confidence in the finance director, okay?
Overtaking rule.
This is not, so much was said last week about who should do this, who should do that. I did the investigation on this, okay? General statute, and I'm going to read all this just because I did the research. General statute, section seven dash two seven six, six, powers of commissioners. Such boards shall have all the powers given by the general statutes, two boards of police commissioners, shall have general management and supervision of the police department and of such town, police department of such town, and of the property and equipment used in connection therewith. Shall make all meaningful regulations for the government, therefore not contrary to law, and may prescribe suitable penalties for the violation of any such regulation, including suspension or removal from office or of any officer or member of such police department. Such board shall have the sole power of appointment, promotion, and removal of the officers and members of such police department under such regulations as it adopts for the purpose. And such appointees shall hold office during good behavior and until removed for cause upon written charges and after hearing. The members of such police department shall have all authority with respect to the service of criminal process and the enforcement of the criminal laws as is vested by the general statute in police officers' principles. So that's their powers, okay? I see nothing in that that they oversee any finances of the police department. And I might add that, just like us as a board of selectmen, we work for the town, they work for the town. They work for the residents, they do not work for the police department. We do not work for the police department or the finance department. We don't work for Kevin Cunningham here, okay? And he, as he's sitting here, he's sitting here as a board of selectmen. That's one. Okay, section seven dash two seven seven, the town to bear expenses. The expenses, salaries, and all costs of maintenance and equipment for such police department shall be paid by such town in the same manner as other expenses of the town government. So in other words, they should have the same payroll, have the same procedures as any other department.
You just gave them full control.
And this is what we're being told, they're, they're not, okay?
They're not what?
Following the same procedures.
They are, we just gave them full control over their payroll, so that everything was okay, so that, so that.
The same D P.
Yeah, so that, so that.
I don't know this, okay? I, I don't know this.
I'm telling you, he just told you that last time.
I don't think he said that. I think it's probably, but that's okay.
No, he said it a couple times, that it, we, that they.
To, to, to change, to make it right, right? They could have control to send these things down.
So they would come up aerial or regular.
I get that, but it's still, it's still, it's on the town to do this, it's not on the police commission to do this.
It's also us working together to make sure that everybody's paid properly.
Well, that's our job.
Yeah, that's our, that's our task.
Now I'm getting to that, okay, okay, I'm getting to that. And then from the charter, four, one, L, not I, because that was a different board. Four, one, L, the board of police commissioners shall be the traffic authority and shall have the powers and duties prescribed by law, which I just read. And that's, that's their powers and duties, and that's it. Next one comes from the charter, this is chapter five, board of selectmen. This is our job, okay? And these are just the, these are just the points that address this issue. In chapter five dash three A, the board of selectmen shall direct and supervise the affairs of the town and be responsible for coordinating the activities of the officers, boards, commissions, and other agencies of the town. By three B, the board of selectmen shall have all powers, duties, and responsibilities conferred upon it by this charter or the general statutes and all powers proper, incidental, or convenient to their exercise. By five B, the board of selectmen shall institute, prosecute, defend, or compromise any legal action or proceedings by or against the town. By five D, the board of selectmen may employ such staff with such powers, duties, and responsibilities as they deem desirable to carry out the duties and responsibilities of the board of selectmen. And that's what we're doing here, is trying to do that. That was it for that. Then chapter six, first selectmen, section six dash two, duties. A, the first selectmen shall be responsible for the execution and carrying out of ordinances, resolutions, policies, and other action voted by the board of selectmen or the town meeting. B, the first selectmen shall be responsible for coordinating the administration of the offices, agencies, boards, and commissions of the town except those functions expressly reserved or delegated to such agencies by law or this charter. C, the first selectmen shall be responsible for a continuous review of current and future needs of the town, including the financial needs and budget requirements. D, the first selectmen shall contract for any services, which this is, and contract to purchase any supplies, equipment, and other commodities required by any town agency except the board of education. E, the first selectmen shall be responsible for the administrative and personnel policies of town offices and employees as established by the board of selectmen. F, the first selectmen shall direct and supervise the administration of all departments and offices of the town except as otherwise provided by this charter or by law. And G, the first selectmen shall coordinate and assist the board of selectmen in the discharge of all board's duties and responsibilities. Okay, so now we're clear on what jobs we have, okay? If you're listening to me, it is our job to make a decision on this, okay? Now, I put some bullet points and I'm going to read those too. First was finger pointing. I wrote that down, finger pointing, from the two departments. Not for me, I'm not finger pointing anyway. All right, I, I'm, I'm listening to the public on this. I didn't ask questions, but at this point, I can't believe either department, and I shouldn't, I should, I, I should want this actually. And it was said last week that we should pass out doubt, okay? So if this is not passed, there'll continue to be doubt, won't there? With whoever's doubting this right now, which a lot of people are, they're going to continue to doubt. Do we want that for our PD? Do we want that for our finance department, that, that doubt, right? And then what happens if we don't pass it? Do we go on the same way with the issues that we're having? Or, you know, the two departments haven't been able to come to a resolution, so it's our responsibility to make sure this happens, that they, they come to, it, this has to be nipped in the bud, it really does, okay? So what happened six years ago was unfortunate, that there was personal issues and the finance director got fired, all right? And, and I'm already looking at this, this is a vote of no confidence, I mean her, okay? So this will be the next step, is they're going to ask me to do this, okay? I'm just saying, it, it.
That's your assumption.
It's my assumption, all right?
You're reading stuff and.
So, so I'm trying to be ahead of it and clear the air. By putting this audit out that goes deeper than just samples, okay? Because that's what an audit does, a regular yearly audit, just takes samples. It doesn't do a deep dive into the finances.
Can I just say something? So if there is a conflict between two departments, why are we not auditing both departments?
They are, it's in there. It's in there.
It's not, you're not auditing the finance department.
Read it, it's in there. So anyway, I'll go on. My next bullet point, we work for the residents of the town, as does the board of police commissioners. We don't work for the finance department, we don't, like, I already said this, we don't work for anyone else but the town, right? We gotta keep that in mind. Many residents I've talked to overwhelmingly want this to happen, okay?
You're talking to different people than I am.
I've talked to all different people, yes.
Yes.
People I don't even know, come up to me.
Say here.
Okay, and this is what they're saying to me, so. Now the bullet point, the police department should welcome an audit to show the residents that there are no issues, okay? I, I don't see a problem, I really don't.
The problem, the problem that I see is that I don't think it's, I don't think we're being transparent.
I, I agree, we're not.
No, we're not being transparent.
We are, we are being transparent. This is our job to do this.
Our job is to work with the departments within our town.
That didn't work, Peggy, that didn't work.
To resolve any problems, well, they weren't brought to the proper authorities, they weren't brought to the commission, they weren't. The, the problems weren't brought there, so how could they have been resolved? If they weren't brought to the proper authorities with the proper procedures and the proper place and the proper time, then how can they be resolved without the proper steps being taken? Tell me, I mean, I'm just.
To me, I'm taking that step. I'm taking that step, I'm doing this.
The point is, we've come to a point where we're auditing the police department, that's audit the finance department too then? We're going to do that.
It's in there, you didn't just look it up while I was talking.
Listen.
Whatever. It's in there, you want any final questions?
Yeah, finance department, you're going to audit the, the, the finance department. When it doesn't pertain to the police department.
Other town payroll records for the police department maintained by the town finance department. I do, please.
Police department, pertaining to the police department.
Right, but for the town, the town side. We're not talking about the other departments. She doesn't have a problem with any other department, Peggy.
I don't have a problem.
She only has a problem with the police department.
She has a problem. It's, it's.
Well, what, okay.
So, hold on, hold on, you're, you're asking me a question, let me finish.
And they have a problem with her, don't they?
Yes, but you're.
Because they, they.
Well, then, that's, that's to audit her too.
There is, I'm telling you.
We're not, discussing, we're, we're, we're looking for an audit, a forensic audit, a, a, one page, right on, right on, right on the special town meeting. It says, discuss and act on a forensic audit and operational review of the police department, police department's payroll, procurement practices, procedures, and asset, asset, uh, finance, uh, asset forfeiture, I can't say that word, financial accounts. It says nothing in here about the finance department. All right, read it.
Other town payroll records for the police department maintained by the town finance department.
Keep going, for the police department.
Exactly, because, because there are no problems with any other department.
I don't know that.
Because I've asked, I asked.
You asked?
I asked.
So someone told you there's no problems?
Yep.
Great.
And this is, I don't know the truth, do I? And this is why I'm telling you, okay?
No, I'm saying, if there's a conflict between the two, if there's a conflict between the two, let's, let's, if there's a conflict between the two, let's clear the air on both sides of it. Clear the air on both sides of that.
Either she's, either she's got bad accounting or they do.
Exactly, and that's why you need to audit that, because if she has bad accounting.
They are.
You're not. You're auditing one department. You're auditing one department.
You want one more time?
I'm finished.
I believe that the item B does talk to the finance department and make sure she's, soon as she's supposed to be doing.
I believe it does.
I believe it does.
If we think that she's screwing up with the police department finances, we will have to deal with that, won't we?
I believe this.
I don't care what shakes out, really, I don't.
I believe that we're going after one department when it could be both. If, if we could be both departments that are having issues, and again, I'm going to say it again, if we're going to audit one department, if the, the exact things that we're, you're talking about here could be happening in other departments. Could be. There could be, there could be invoices missing, there could be, uh, uh, town property that's not being properly documented. There could be, you know, we don't have the proper documentation on a lot of things.
So when they come to me, when these other departments come to me? I might consider that, but that's not before me right now.
That's not before you right now, because someone has, has a problem with another department.
No.
We've had this in this town before.
No, 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 this is issues, this is issues on both, obviously.
Obviously, so let's audit both departments.
It is.
You're only auditing the police department.
You're auditing, you're auditing the finances of, but on both sides.
Pertaining to, pertaining to the police department.
So, so, so you're back to be wanting to audit the whole town?
I've been saying that from the beginning, if they, because these issues that.
So you want to, you want to spend what, $100,000?
I, I want to spend, so you're going to, you're going to. How do you know that?
Because they would say it.
What do you mean, they would say it, so?
They would have come forward, they would, they would force that.
Maybe, maybe they're not aware of the problems that they're, that they're, maybe they're not aware of the procedures that they're violating. Maybe they're not aware, a lot of things are done in good faith. A lot of things are done in good faith. You know what I mean? And this is going to cost hundreds of that, hundred, oh, oh, way over, because there's other people going to be lawyering up. And there's, we're going to be paying lawyer fees. This has happened in town before. But, it's, it's happened in town before, it's $35,000, and I don't even know what the cost of, when we're.
This has never happened in town. That was one of my questions. Did we ever have a forensic audit, on the finance department?
No, back to this, we've had one, one commission in one department, uh, I'm not getting along, and they sued each other. Years ago, you can look it up. Um, but by.
Doesn't mean that was right.
It doesn't mean it's right now, just because.
What is a forensic audit?
I'm not saying it's a forensic audit, I'm just saying this is going to cost, because people are going to lawyer up. When they start lawyering up. because people are going to lawyer up, when they start lawyering up, to make sure that they're, they are not being abused, and they are not having allegations made against them that are factually untrue. And if there was a problem with this stuff.
That's what I want to know, and that's what I want to know, and that's what the residents of the town want to know.
And the residents should be, should need have both, both witnesses.
That's what they want to know.
Item B, go back to the other, other town payroll records for the police department maintained by the town finance department, what if, what if the audit comes back and says, okay, the town finance department has some problems with the way we do the record keeping?
That's why we need to audit that department, that's why we need to audit that department. Let's just, both departments, since they're not getting along, make sure everybody's complying with everything that they're supposed to. Now, honestly, guys, there's going to be things that people do in good faith that they didn't know they weren't supposed to be doing, or they aren't aware, that's, that's, that's human nature, okay? As long as it's done in good faith and not done maliciously, that's not a problem. We just say, look, guys, you got to do it this way, because that's apparent. Look, guys, you can't do that, because that's not, you know, that's not proper record keeping, or that. I'm, I'm just, again, we work for the people, we work.
I'm not, I'm not going, I'm not going to get deep into, into what, what they did, what she.
No, it's.
I'm not going to, because I don't know all that, and that's what a forensic audit will do.
We work for the people, so we should be doing both sides of that street, not coming down on one side. We work for the people, you just said we work for the people.
There's no two sides, we work for the people.
No, there isn't, and we shouldn't, we, right now, we're going, we're saying we want a forensic audit of the police department. We should say, we should, if we work for the people, we should be fair.
People haven't, they haven't said anything to me about any other department. Imagine that.
Oh, they all mean, so people talking here, and people talking to me, and people talking all over town. This is how we, this is how small towns are, everyone talks.
That's too bad.
It is, but that's how this works.
Especially in downtown.
I'm just going to ask what your pleasure is at this time.
I'll make a motion to end it. Except car rigs in Ingram for the forensic audit, which is coming, for thirty-five, thirty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars.
And that would be for the.
I'd be the whole thing, forensic audit and operational review of police department payroll, procurement practices and procedures, and asset forfeiture, financial accounts. Car rigs in Ingram, thirty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty.
I will second that motion. Any other discussion? If there are any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
Um, hold on, so this is going to, go to the Board of Finance next?
Kelly already has money in the OFC to cover that.
So it doesn't got to go, you're not going to go to the Board of Finance?
She has money in the.
It says finance, finance, and after recommendation by the Board of Select, this is section two point five, after the recommendation by the Board of Select or the Board of Education, going to go with the charter, and the approval of the Board of Finance, you need the approval of Board of Finance, and the resolution of non-budgeted appropriation for about more than ten thousand dollars, but not more than fifty thousand dollars. After recommendation by the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Education and approved by the Board of Finance, any resolution for any non-budgeted appropriation of more than fifty thousand dollars shall be placed on a call of a town meeting and after completion of the other business, after reasonable discussion of such appropriation, the moderator, blah, blah, blah.
Peggy, you get this every week, right?
Yep.
Okay. Right there, it says audit. How much is left in the audit? So it's already budgeted, but it hasn't changed.
It's budgeted, so wait, it's budgeted for the thirty, what, thirty-five thousand? Here's audit, right here, look.
But not property, you just got the wrong card.
Yes.
Right there.
So right, available right now, you have thirty-nine thousand dollars. What if this, now you've just taken this audit and brought it back to twenty-seventeen?
It's already included.
You're telling me they wrote a proposal for twenty-seventeen?
Yes.
When you, when at the last thing, you said that it was for twenty-twenty? Can we change the price for three more years? You cannot, listen, I've been in auditing for, in, in business for a very, very long time, forty-seven years, okay? I'm going to tell you, when a, when a company, when a company gives you a quote for a certain period of time, because that's a certain amount of work, they are going to go back three years for free.
Peggy, did you hear a packet that I gave you, did you see the addendum?
Mm-hmm, I did, to go back to twenty-two seventeen. Well, where's the new proposal?
It's part of that bid.
So you went out to bid for twenty-seventeen before, and you were saying twenty-twenty before?
Yep. Oh, I said it's twenty-seventeen, that's the number that we put out to bid.
The bid you put out was twenty-twenty. It went out in twenty-twenty, it was okay.
The addendum was already in there online.
Again, the addendum went back three more years, and it's going to cost more money, and all you got is thirty-nine thousand.
I didn't say it's going to cost more money, Peggy, it's that the addendum was put out there, and that's what they bid on.
They bid on twenty-twenty, according to your packet. Right here, it says, these services are to be formed for the town for twenty-twenty-two present date.
And all of these were also sent out to all eleven of the companies that put their bid in.
So you're saying to me that you put in this presentation twenty-twenty, but you really wanted twenty-seventeen?
That's why the addendum was put out.
And it's not going to cost us any, how, how can they do a proposal for twenty, back to twenty-twenty to present in their forensic investigation approach? And now, and, so where's the proposal going back to twenty-seventeen? That doesn't make any sense, Gavin.
That's for paying for that full audit back to twenty-seventeen.
I want to see the invoice for it, prove it.
I want to get it.
Okay.
Well, you're just wondering about the company time.
Let's do it before we have to go start something that we haven't been appropriate to pay for, because you only have thirty-nine thousand dollars there. If, at, from twenty-twenty, if it's going to.
Voting was made for thirty-four thousand, five hundred, it was second and voted on.
Yes, but that, when it, in the packet, it says twenty-twenty is what they're going to add on. Says right here, forensic investigation approach for twenty-twenty to present date, analyze, analyze period, it says.
And you can double-check, Kelly tomorrow, is it? But I'm telling you, it's thirty-four thousand, five hundred.
And then this is, the packets they put together is error checked, and it's not right, and it was.
My question is, is that money, that, is that very, 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 yeah?
I make a motion to adjourn, of course.
And then he's going to come back for more money for that?
Second?
Yep.
That money was appropriated for this year's audit, so are you going to come back for more money for another audit for this, for this year? So it's not budgeted.
Just take that as a general fund.